Service airline flying from Burbank and Santa Barbara into San Carlos. Seven flights a day, seven days a week with a Pilatus plane that was quite noisy. And subsequent to that, there have been two meetings at San Carlos Airport with a number of Atherton and North Fair Oaks residents as well as Mayor Lewis, Supervisor Slocum, and Representatives of Surf Air at the airport and of San Mateo County. I felt that those meetings went very well. Initially, both the airport and Surf Air were extremely responsive to the resident concerns. At the second meeting, the FAA was present and verbally accepted a request to evaluate an alternative GPS flight path that would be to the east of the current flight path. The current flight path goes over Encinal School, directly over Encinal School, and goes through a couple Atherton neighborhoods, North Fair Oaks neighborhood, going into San Carlos. And the airline agreed to reduce their flaps and to make some other operational changes in an attempt to reduce the noise as they were coming into the airport. The residents that I've talked to have indicated that those efforts to reduce the noise haven't really been effective. And I felt that we need to have some kind of a forum to let people address the council, but not just in Atherton, in the entire community. So I actually thought the council may take up the item of supporting a community meeting at the pavilion that would include sponsorship from the Atherton Council, Menlo Park, and Palo Alto if they are so inclined. And I would like to see that because I think that people need the opportunity to voice their concerns and to put, not just our elected officials, but create a forum for people to come together and make their, the extent of their concerns known to both the airport and Surf Air.
Great. I just want to follow up on what Ms. DeGolia was saying about the community meeting. I did reach out to the Mayor of Menlo Park, Peter Otaki, and received communication back from him today that he is in support of participating and also copied the Mayor Pro Tem who's going to be sworn in as mayor within the next month, Ray Mueller, to be part of it. And the Mayor of Palo Alto, Greg Sharp, he's been in communication with me, him, with me. And he, I don't feel that Palo Alto is a big concern for him. So he may or may not, you know, tag on. So I think just with Menlo Park and with Atherton, and if we can get a consensus from council to do that, I think that would, might be the next step.
Can I make a suggestion to you also?
Yes.
Because the flight path goes right over my house, too.
I'm Glenwood.
I'm Glenwood. And I have already brought this, I had already, before Rick and y'all are going, you know, I've been in touch with Tony Waits and filled out the surveys and stuff. But I had contacted Anna Schu's office about this. And so you might want to see if we can get her involved with this as well because, of course, she's participated in some things at SFO.
Right.
And so, and I also brought this up also on a, you know, she has these calls where these-
The town halls.
Town hall calls, yeah. And so, there. So I think we should, and now that the press is giving it some, some more exposure, I think it's, actually is going to get a little bit more attention. So, so as I hear back from that, I'll be more than happy to coordinate with yourself and Rick on that.
And I think we really also have to keep Warren Slocum, Supervisor Slocum, involved. He was at the first meeting that we attended in October, I guess it was October 11th, and then his aide was there November 8th. So, and I just want to-
I'll see you tomorrow.
And you're going to see him tomorrow?
Yeah, I can say something.
Okay. And, great, yes. And so, I, actually, I saw him at an A-Bag meeting last week. So I just want to say that Surf Air has, in all these meetings, has been very accommodating and willing to work with the neighbors and work with trying to modify procedures and be open to the, a new flight path. The FAA, as Rick indicated, representative was there and took a verbal request to start the process to create a new flight path, not over our neighborhoods and not over somebody else's, but, you know, that would go into San Carlos safely. So that is in process. We feel that a more formalized approach might be effective with more political clout. So, that being said, any other public, I'll stop talking and we'll welcome anyone else who wants to take the podium from the public. Yes, ma'am?
Um-
You really don't want to do that?
It's on the record. We need you to come up to speak in the microphone.
Otherwise, people won't be able to help you on the call like this. Great.
Thank you.
And then, and I'll talk. Say your name.
Okay, I'm Linda Cohn. I live in North Fair Oaks.
Good.
Directly under the plane path. And I'm not good at public speaking. You get nervous. So anyway, what I've recently read is that these are six-seat planes, so they don't require a licensed pilot. That would need to be confirmed. And the pilot could be certificated. I feel it's a safety issue. We have daycare homes in our neighborhood with little children. These planes are flying right over us on a regular basis. And I, it's just traumatizing, just talking about it. It's traumatizing having these planes come over us. And the weather's been good so far, but these planes do, planes do crash. And there's nobody monitoring the height value of these flights that I know of. So who's going to do that? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I, I can answer those questions pretty quickly? Height, the, the exact path that that plane flies is monitored by the FAA and the tower at San Carlos. And the tower, there's flight following in the whole Bay Area. Every single plane that's up there is being followed by somebody. They're told exactly where to go. And what the mayor is trying to, and the city council's trying to do is to get them to move that flight path somewhere else that doesn't come in over an area where noise will cause a problem. Now, there are a lot of jets that use that same exact flight path every day. They don't seem to bother people because their fan jets are very quiet on their landing. Problem is, the Pilatus is a propeller plane with a jet engine. It's the propeller that makes a lot of noise. So they're very safe, and by the way, they have to have one licensed pilot onboard. They don't need to have two like most commercial jets do because it's a plane that only requires one. Some jets only require one pilot. That one requires one pilot, but he has to be licensed and he has to be certified to fly a commercial aircraft, which is extra certification and lots of hours. So in terms of the pilot's end of it, it's very safe. And the Pilatus is a pretty safe airplane, but you're absolutely correct. All airplanes have been known to fall to earth in an uncontrolled way.
That's reassuring. Yes. Oh, that's remarkable.
I would say this, Bill. The FAA establishes rules as far as height goes, but they don't monitor it. In other words, if you break the rules, nothing happens. I, I and two other Atherton residents many years ago worked with the roundtable, the FAA, because at that time, in Lindenwood, we were experiencing tremendous noise problems from commercial aircraft coming into San Francisco. And what was happening was, the FAA had established rules, but foreign pilots especially didn't take any notice of them. They came anywhere they liked. And, and our attempts to have these foreign pilots punished failed totally. The FAA is a very difficult group to deal with. And I would say that, you know, we even established a system at that time where we could monitor every plane that came in, and we could just determine what his height was. And I would say, especially in the morning, a good 20 to 30 percent of them were totally breaking the rules. They were coming in way too low, and, you know, the FAA wasn't doing anything about it. So I would say, having rules is one thing, but enforcing the rules is totally different. And I've noticed it hasn't happened.
When I'm talking about rules, I agree with you. Pilot in command can always deviate from those if they believe it's a safety issue. But I will also tell you, having had my ears reamed before, if you are not at the exact altitude, and I don't mean close, the exact altitude that's called for by the air traffic controller, it will have a discussion with you you will not enjoy. And I'm just telling you, they can do that, and they can tell you on the ground to report to the tower if in fact there was a, some kind of violation. And they do follow up on that. And I think that the foreign pilots that I've seen flying in and around, most of them are trainees, and they, there's not much you can do to them. You're right.
Okay. We're going to open it up for more public comment, because you all came here to talk. I want to make sure you can have your statement.
My name is Wendy Ochs. I live at Placetus Avenue in North Fair Oaks. And I and my neighbor Frank initiated the complaints to San Carlos Airport. These planes are coming in starting at 7:34 every morning. They're very loud, very disruptive. I have a business, I work out of my home. There are times that I can't hear myself on the phone. If I entertain in my garden, my guests literally duck. The planes appear to be that loud. They're very loud. We've had Rick and Liz, who have been great support for us, but we really need a community-wide support because the airline is expanding. They are up to raise another 50 to 60 million, and they're going to be up to 10 to 15 flights a day. It's very disruptive to our lives and our property values, I'm sure. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm David Fluck. I live on Holbrook Lane in Atherton, and I'm here in wood, won't, I guess, repeat all the comments already. I do agree with them. Aircraft are flying very low, and my concerns currently are that, this is a bigger issue than just what the Atherton, or town of Atherton, should be dealing with. We do need additional support from Menlo Park, Redmond City, the county, and even Palo Alto, if we can get it. I'm incredibly grateful to Elizabeth and to Rick for jumping onboard and helping us deal with this issue. The political support is outstanding. You have my vote in the future, and Rick. The, the concerns that need to be stressed here are that there are issues around property values decreasing for anybody that lives near the overflight area. And there are studies that show that any, you know, major increases in sound, especially associated with aircraft and other noise variables, can significantly impact property prices. I, for one, don't want to have to find out that by having to sell my house because I'm living under a noisy flight path. I love where I live. I love Atherton, and I want to stay here. But I do not want to see Surf Air expand their operations. I do not want to see future airlines come into San Carlos offering similar levels of service that can further disrupt what our communities have enjoyed for many, many years. It wasn't until Surf Air arrived on the scene this past June that the complaints into the airport have risen substantially by all communities. And in fact, I was looking at the noise complaints. Atherton last year, same time period, call it June, beginning of June until middle of November last year versus this year. Last year, Atherton had zero complaints filed with the San Carlos Airport. And this year, we're seeing many, many more, you know, north of 15 to 20 complaints being filed. And, and those are being tracked by households, so it's a little hard to actually find the information related to per incident, meaning how many flyovers that surf or other aircraft are doing. But the fact remains that last year there were none. This year, there's substantially more. And the same pattern exists, if you look at the stats, for Menlo Park. In addition, we're running a petition online through a reputable site called change.org. Our stats show that the majority of people are, about 47 percent of the respondents on the petition are from Menlo Park, and about 45, 46 percent are from Atherton. So this issue is resonating with multiple communities, especially with Atherton. And if it's not already clear, it would be great to continue to have your support. It would be also great to make sure that Warren Slocum and his folks are part of this since it's a county airport, and that we do reach out and ensure that all of our other surrounding community politicians are involved and informed, and they really fully understand what's going on. Finally, I do think that there's only so much we, as individuals, can do to gain support from our communities. I would like to propose that we do have some formal outreach efforts into our community, either a mailing, like a good old-fashioned snail mail, to our neighborhood, neighborhood members that are not online and may not understand what options they have to participate in meetings like this and elsewhere. And I would recommend that we try to get Menlo Park, Redmond City, and other communities to do the same, to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to participate and voice their support, or at least voice their opinions on, or at least have.
Thank you. All right. Any other members? Yes, out of the public? Have a comment?
Sorry if I repeated anything. I, I figured item 18 would be much later.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We bumped you up.
Oh, okay. Well, I agree. Came later. So I'm Anthony Waits. I live at 22 Holbrook. So the sound measurement that the police made where they said 20 Holbrook, that doesn't exist, as I've actually made in my, in my driveway. The, the planes go directly over my house, just, just straight up. I could, you know, just look straight up at them. So I'll, I'll touch on a couple things. Hopefully I haven't made any, I'll try not to repeat, you know, what I've heard here. But sound-wise, they fly over, you know, multiple times a day. 9:20 is a convenient time for me to measure. So I, I bought a, a sound meter. I had an old one from Radio Shack, but I bought a, bought a new one. So I just found the driveway and held it like this. And background noise, before they flew over, was 56 to 60 decibels. So say roughly 58. And when they flew over, well, as I stand there waiting for them to fly over, Harley, I live two houses in from, from Middlefield. Harley-Davidson went down to Middlefield. It was, it was at 70, it was at 66 decibels. And then when Surf Air went over, it was at 76, 76 decibels. It's mostly engine noise. It's a very, very loud aircraft. So, you know, obviously they're loud. Each, you know, 10 units of decibels is, is 10 times the power. So they're 20, they're roughly 20 decibels over background by my measurement. That means it's 100 times the power level of, of, of the, you know, background ambient noise. So that's, you know, that's the sound issue. And of course, the further north they get, you know, so Redmond City, North Fair Oaks is really feeling it much worse. But, but the other issue is, you know, one that concerns me the most is there's, there's property, property value. David, Donna Street, for me, his house is worth more, so I am blessed to lose, but, but property value. But I'm concerned about children. That, that, that plane fly, those planes, that flight path is over a bunch of schools. And, you know, I'm a private, I'm, I'm an engineer, private pilot of over 20 years. And, you know, as part, as part of private pilot training, you know, you do, you do emergency landings, right? You're with an instructor, then instructor pulls the engine down to idle and says, you know, land. You try to find a place. And they tell you, don't go to schoolyards because there might be children. But schoolyards are very tempting, right? So these planes are single-engine planes, right? If that engine turns off, you know, it's just a very low-quality glider. And it's a very low, you know, at that point. So they're going to be, you know, you know, the pilot could care less about the people in back of the plane. He wants to save his life at that point. They're going to look for, you know, the biggest open field and, and hope they don't, you know, decapitate too many children in the process. So that's what, that, I'm more concerned just about this, you know, the, you know, the safety of a single-engine large plane flying so low for such a long extended, on its very, on its very low flight, flight path. So that's, that's my, my, my second primary concern. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you made it. We're continuing. So we're on public comment period on item number 18, which we moved up for the Surf Air noise issue. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Bill Flutch. I also live in the North Fair Oaks neighborhood. More importantly, I worked at Stanford University and worked with a lot of venture capitalists and stuff. And I, I want to assure you that this model of aviation is what's going to expand in this country geometrically. This is a way for people to afford to bring workers from Southern California, and we're guilty, and Oracle, and, and lots of my friends. But this is really going to expand. And, and I'm grateful, grateful to the Atherton City Council for looking at this problem because this thing is going to explode on you and on all of us. They're looking at, you know, we may have eight or 10 flights today, they're going to 20. It will go way beyond that. This is a very, very cost-effective way for companies like Oracle and others in the Silicon Valley that my university has helped found to bring workers from all over the world in at a greatly reduced price because you can just fly them home the next day, right? Up and down the state of California. So I want you to understand that the problem you're facing is about to explode on you in terms of volume. And so I won't repeat any of the other concerns. I'm just saying, you're, you're at just the knee curve of a technology explosion here. And it's really important for all of us to address it now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Kim Burke, and I'm also a North Fair Oaks resident. And I just want to add to something that you had to say, which is that not only is it cost-effective for these companies, it's, it's not just a cost, it's the convenience. They don't have to wait two-hour TSA lines. You don't have to be security-checked. It's just, you just show up at the airport, parking's easy. You get on your plane, and you're, and you're out. And in Asia, they've had many of these startup airlines that will actually build their own airports to make it more convenient to go to various locales that hitherto you had to be a backpacker to get there. And I sort of see this in the same convey that this is going to explode as it becomes. It's going to be a very, very popular alternative for workers. And it is something I think that we need to pay close attention to now before it gets out of hand.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Desi?
Hi, I'm Suzanne Van Esch from Tanmore Brook Lane. And I would just kind of echo most of these comments. But I also wanted to say, and just to, because I know there have been comments on some of the boards where there's, this has been discussed, that this is primarily a noise issue, not a safety issue. Well, there's definitely an extreme noise problem, but I see it as definitely a safety issue as well. And I think we only have to look back a couple of years to the incident with the Tesla executives on the small plane that went down in Palo Alto. And I believe went into, were nearby a daycare center. So I think we have to keep things like that in mind and be, pursue this and do what we can to.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Carolyn Klebsch. I'm in North Fair Oaks. I just wanted to give a quick picture of what it's like to be underneath the planes. I've been out landscaping our garden, which was ripped out for the pipeline, the Hetch Etchy pipeline. So I've been out rebuilding my garden, and part of it is a big lawn. I have groups come to do meditation and qigong, people who, many of them have had illnesses. So part of the plan was to create this oasis in which people could come and in a beautiful and quiet setting do things that would increase their health. So I'm out there working on the garden and start seeing, it was August, I was gone in July, started seeing these blue planes going over, and it was shocking. They were so low, so noisy, and always exactly the same path. The people landscaping with me all were astonished. They started telling time. They'd say, oh, 9:20, there goes a Surf airplane. When we had dinner parties, everybody stopped every time a plane went over. And I was told to aggregate the number of incidences rather than calls. So I was keeping a spreadsheet. And in a three-week period, three-to-four-week period, I had 158 flights logged. And I never did an exact count, but somewhere between 80 and 90 percent of them were Surf Air. We've lived in the same house for 16 years. We've had little planes. We've had JAL and, and Ireland coming in low. So, you know, we lived with airplanes. But this is something entirely different. It's disruptive. It's noisy. It's safe. It's also a visual impact to be in your garden and have these low things going across. So I am incredibly grateful to Atherton for picking up the ball on this. Hopefully, San Mateo County will join in. And thank you very much.
Anyone?
Hello, I'm Angie Stevenson. I'm also on Holbrook Lane. And I think everyone who's spoken has sort of voiced our concerns, but I just wanted to go on record that we are another resident who is very highly frustrated. I've called the airport, I've complained, I've actually emailed Surf Air. And yes, they've been very, you know, willing to, they've been responding. And they've made comments about changing their approach and the landing gear. And I'm not an airline pilot, so I don't know the technicalities of it, but it hasn't changed. And so I will continue to fight that. And I know we, as a community, will continue to fight it. But any help you can give us is really appreciated because it is, it is quite disturbing.
So, anyone else?
Hi there. My name is Keith Cosner from 538 Knight Avenue. I'm just here to show my support and all the bright minds that we have working on this. My wife and I bought our first home about three months ago, and we're extremely devastated by this, although obviously our economic impact is going to be somewhat yours. Following up on the health issue, I recently read a study from the UK that linked constant exposure to airport noise to premature heart disease and, so, I can't even go to that. I just hate it. It's like someone started a lawnmower on my, on my roof. I, you know, I work from home. It's ridiculous. And I'm glad that other people are upset about this, too. It blows directly over my house. I'm sure it's 2,000 feet, but I really couldn't care less how, it's loud. I hate it. Thank you.
All right. Okay. I'm going to have to take this, you know, one, maybe one more after this, and then we'll close public comment because we need to.
Good evening. My name is Frank Inecni, and I live at 45 Placetus. I'm on the North Fair Oaks side of Placetus. The first block, as you know, is Atherton. The planes fly directly down my driveway, sometimes directly over my home. And I've lived in that home for 28 years, raised two children there, and have heard planes for the last 28 years. Sometimes stunt planes, private planes, Saturdays and Sundays, there's more. When I started to notice this in June, this is a different kind of sound, a different kind of airplane, as everyone else has said. I met with the CEO in July of Surf Air, and they were, he was very accommodating, said he wanted to work with the community, he wants to be partners. And they have, to this date, shown that they're interested in at least listening and not taking an adverse position. But they're very clear that they have a business model that they want to execute on. They're very clear that they, safety is a mandate for them. And there is very little room without some pressure from us and in cooperation with the FAA to move to a different flight pattern. So I would like to thank Atherton for taking the lead in this, and Rick DeGolia and Elizabeth, and hope that the other communities participate as well as Supervisor Warren Slocum. Thank you.
All right. One more, and then we'll close public comment. If not, yes, yes.
Hi, I'm Bob Roser. I wanted to just mention on the safety aspects of the small planes. When I was in business for a company and flying 50 percent of the time all over the place, it was really convenient to fly the small aircraft because getting in small, easier to get in the air, the airports, et cetera. And a policy came out that we weren't allowed to fly on any single-engine or small twin-engine airplanes. And I thought, well, you know, what's that about? Well, what it was about was, there may have been some concern on the part of our management for the safety of the employees flying on those aircraft. But what really happened is the insurance company wouldn't cover anybody should there be an accident on any single-engine or twin-engine- be an accident on any single-engine or twin-engine small airplane because the data and analysis showed that the safety is very different. It's markedly different in terms of accidents. And in part, I don't know what it contributed to, but part of it may be that the large aircraft may be inherent in safety, but they also have tremendous procedures and maintenance and et cetera that some of the small companies are not as diligent about. But at any rate, it was so different that the insurance company would not cover us on those planes should there be an accident.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming out and I will bring it back to council and we'll try to formulate what our next steps are going to be. And I think that if there were magic wands, we would certainly wave it and make them as well away immediately. The FAA representative did indicate that, you know, this flight path has been in San Carlos since time immemorial when the airport was first built. It's a straightened approach. It's the safest route and all the glide path, it's been there. But they realize that the frequency of this chartered flight is creating the disturbances. And at least they were willing to look at creating a new flight path, not to take this flight path away. So, I mean, that's, you know, and then it would be up to the carrier to choose to take a different flight path. So I think with the political pressure, we'll continue to work with them. I think if we can talk with each other about our next steps and how we can pull this together.
I would like to make some comments.
Yes.
Of course, as I mentioned previously, many years ago, I worked hard with two other residents to reduce the noise of commercial aircraft coming into San Francisco. And it was really quite an experience working with the FAA, not an experience that I would recommend. Like a big rubber ball and you can kick it a lot, but it doesn't move much. But what we did was eventually we were relatively successful, not in changing the flight path, but in changing the glide path, as I call it. And what amounted to was that planes would come in much higher and they would come in much higher, which would reduce the noise, and then they would come in at a much steeper angle. Now, commercial aircraft don't like that because passengers, you know, are sitting when you're coming in, they don't like coming in on that kind of path. But eventually, most of the planes, I mean, the noise level in Lindwood has been significantly reduced. And one of the things I would suggest immediately with Surf Air, and I'm very sympathetic to this problem because I've been through it, is that we insist that they come in higher. There's no reason in the world why these planes have to come in that way. Now, what it means when they come in higher is that they have to come in at a much steeper angle to the airport. And that's not a problem and it's a much safer way. It's much more uncomfortable for the passengers, but that's, you know, relatively speaking, relative to the problems they cause on the ground, I'd say that, you know, the passengers just have to suffer. So I would say an immediate fix ought to be to try to get Surf Air to come in at a much, I don't know what the height level is over your house at the moment. What is it, 1,000 feet maybe?
Yes. 600 to 1,000.
Because if they change that, if they change that to 2,000 to 3,000 feet, you would see a huge difference in the noise level. And that would be a much quicker thing to do than trying to change the flight path. The other thing I would say is, you know, you have to be careful if you change the flight path, that you don't, if you move it east and it's over Lindwood, you're going to get all kinds of objections from Lindwood because they would, you know, that's not a good idea. And I've had people say, well, move it to come over 101. Well, unfortunately, if you moved it to come over 101, it would definitely affect Lindwood. I'd say if you're going to move it east, move it so that they come over the bay. That, to me, would be by far the best way to go.
All right. Councilman Wim, if you may.
I have one last comment. So, of course, I thank everybody for coming out, but I do think that since it is the NFAA at the end decision, you know, again, I think that we're going to need to raise the game up past the county level and get our elected officials and as many elected officials involved as possible to try and help us. And I think that NSU should be able to help us there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think that you're going to find a city council or board supervisor's member that's not going to find an interest to, that the residents, raise the residents' concerns. I think that the residents' concerns should continue to go on lobby, website, continue on. And I think that there is a sense of urgency because this is quasi new. It's in the press. And I think that this gives us an opportunity to get together as leadership and organize with the leadership of cities to sit down with the FAA and Surf Air and start that process instead of the reverse and saying, we'd like to do more. We hear your concerns and we will still be willing to do community outreach and we think that that's still going to be a good idea to keep you guys and get more people organized and active in this until the issue's solved. So I think that one of the steps that we should do is find out what other cities have had some complaints and see if we can get some representatives of these cities to get down to the table and start talking about this now while this issue is hot. And while the press has it, thank you for the press being here presently today, we'll keep this hot because it is a concern. It is a safety factor. There are flight pattern issues and so on and so forth. There's, we don't want it to become something that we have inherited as, oh, well, we've been doing it for several years. We don't want bureaucracy to unfortunately become the fact that now it's here and you guys have accepted it and we added planes. I think that we should organize now as the leadership group and have the communities continue in an active pattern to try to change it and organize and get people together so that when the FAA, because the FAA, as you heard Councilman Dobby mention, is not that pleasant to deal with. But they do deal with people when you come up with numbers. And that would assist the leadership groups in the common goal, which is to make the pathway safer, reduction in noise, and so on and so forth.
Good. So here's a suggestion. We are going to swear in a new council member on December 4th, 4 o'clock. I could, we could create a subcommittee, an ad hoc committee with two members of our council as representatives to continue to work with the resident groups and Surf Air and meet with San Carlos Airport and then also in other elected officials in our area and put together a group meeting with our other cities. And the date of that to be determined, but we really can't create this ad hoc committee formally from council until December 4th.